Well, good morning. Welcome to City Hall. We'll get started this morning with the prayer from Dr. Tom Augberg from the First Baptist Church of Oklahoma City, and after that I'll ask Councilman Meg Salyer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody rise, please.
I stood here first eight years ago, one week into my pastorate at First Baptist Church. The church, like the city, had gone through a long, dark night, but the church, like the city, has gone through a season of renewal and renaissance, where now we're a vital part of this community and a part of the work of this city, providing the spiritual home for five refugee congregations, providing English as a second language laboratories, being a critical partner in the renewal of the class and tempin community, and on each of your spots is a brochure for Good Shepherd Ministries, which your colleague David Greenwell serves as a board member. That is a ministry born out of First Baptist Church and continues to be a part of, a vital part of who we are, providing medical, dental, food, and clothing for our community, recently receiving a $7.7 million grant from the Butterfield Foundation to expand medical care in our community. We're grateful for you. We're grateful for our city. We're grateful to be a part of it. Let me pray for you. Lord, I thank you for our great city, a place of promise and of hope, a place of grand dreams and aspirations, and I pray for these city leaders, Lord, who provide wisdom and guidance and direction for who we are and who we are becoming. Lord, I pray for them that you will provide encouragement and strength for them as they struggle with making the right decision, not the easy decision, not the good decision, but the best decision and the right decision. I pray, Lord, that you will bless them in what they do and bless our city through them. We offer this day their actions, our city before you, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Your Honor, before we get started, may I call Dr. Augberg back up here and just visit with him for a moment or two? I think since we do address the issue of trying to assist our citizens, especially in the area of providing health care and also the food pantry through Good Shepherd Ministry, it would really be worth our time just to visit a little bit further about that. And, Tom, last night, there's even discussions about the possibility of taking some of those efforts into outline areas with respect to providing food and more nutritional type of meals to areas within our city that don't have a full-service grocery store, for example. So, not only do you just serve that local community, you're really expanding throughout the city.
Well, part of our reality is there are parts of our cities, like Midtown, Bricktown, and other areas, that have had tremendous growth in our places of grand opportunity. But there are still many of our citizens, too many of our citizens, who live lives where hope and desperation define their day rather than opportunity and dream, where hunger is part of their reality, where lack of medical care is part of how they deal with everyday life. So, part of what we've tried to do through First Baptist Churches, step into those moments. For those who've come from countries where conflict, war, and disaster have been a commonplace scene, we've tried to become the spiritual and emotional home for those, to provide them a place of promise. For our citizens who live on the other side of the economic divide, trying to provide ministries of dignity, that despite the best efforts of government, the need for medical care in our city is profound. There are still too many who do not have access to critical medical care because of insurance, and their answer has been to go to the emergency rooms where they stand in long lines for what really needs to be cared for by a primary doctor. So, part of our joy is through the Butterfield Grant, which is, if you don't know the Butterfield Foundation, it was created when Deaconess Hospital was sold to a for-profit organization. Free Methodist made the choice to take the proceeds and build the foundation to continue to further medical work in our city in a Christian context. That was a profound gift. The Free Methodist could have chosen to relocate it to another city or another state where they're more prevalent, but they chose to leave it here, and because of that, Good Shepherd and two other clinics have received substantive grants that will, in our case, allow us to operate 40 hours a week, becoming the medical home to many in our community who would otherwise have no medical home. We are investigating some very interesting options. In a partnership with Butterfield and others, we're looking at a mobile medical clinic that will literally not only say, "Come to our clinic," but letting us put the clinic in critical neighborhoods in our city where people still live far from medicine. It's hard to imagine in our current culture, but there's still so many who, for simple things like prenatal care and inoculations and basic, basic physicals are not a part of their story. We want to provide it not only at our campus, but in the middle of community. We're looking at our own site. We provide a large-scale food pantry in cooperation with the Regional Food Bank. But David is right. Last night, we're exploring a new partnership that would let us provide, if you can imagine, a portable grocery store, providing healthy foods in neighborhoods where there's little or no access to grocery, grocery stores. There are whole ZIP codes in our city with no grocery stores, and many who cannot afford the prices they see in those grocery stores. So, how do you make sure we move from potatoes and rice on the table to things that are sustainable for our children? So, one of our goals is to begin to say, "How do we provide good, healthy food at a price people can pay in a place that they can get to?" We're excited to be part of the story. We're excited what you're doing in the city, but we feel like our church still has a vital responsibility. We've reached an era where people are beginning to wonder, "What is the value of the church?" And even wondering, okay, we've said churches have been a tax-neutral or tax-free component. I would tell you that in my eight years, we provided millions of dollars of ministries of resources for our city that otherwise would have had to been paid for. So, we're a downtown church committed to stay downtown, to shape what's going on in the life of the city, not only for those who are experiencing the joy of the Renaissance, but for those who've been left behind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I have to make a comment, please. I think this demonstrates the great value face-based operations bring to the city. They can do this in a much more efficient way than the city ever could, and I really appreciate their efforts in the area, and I think we should do all we can to support their efforts, but we need to realize that these people can answer these needs, social needs, much better than we can. Thank you.
I'll call the meeting to order and move on to item three, which is from the office of the mayor. We have a resolution for Teacher of the Month. Every, every month, the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City helps us honor one of our fine teachers, and I'll ask Ms. Lang to come up here and join me, please, and I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution.
Qua'as Joanne Lang has been named Teacher of the Month for March 2013 by the Edmond Public Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Qua'as Joanne is a third grade teacher at Charles Haskell Elementary School, has been making a difference in the lives of students for more than 23 years. Qua'as Joanne Lang's colleagues all agree she is one of those people for which teaching is truly a passion and a calling. Qua'as Joanne Lang has spent her teaching career committed to meeting the individual academic, social, and emotional needs of every child she encounters. Qua'as her dedication to her students goes above and beyond as she spends numerous hours outside of the school day and on weekends, ensuring that lessons are well-planned and meet the diverse learning student needs of her students. Qua'as Joanne Lang greets best students each morning with a smile, setting the tone for having a great day, and at the end of the school day, she helps them get safely back to their buses for the trip home. They leave knowing that she genuinely cares and looks forward to seeing them again. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Joanne Lang on her selection as March 2013 Teacher of the Month by the Edmond Public Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
We have a motion and a second. Now comes the critical part, and it passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I truly feel honored. I mean, this is something that I thoroughly enjoy. I've been doing it for 25 years, and every day is a brand-new day, and thank you. Thank you for recognizing something that I love to do.
Well, thank you. She told me 25 years at the same school, and was it all third grade?
Actually, I started, did a half a year in fifth, did Shannon Miller, at Shannon Miller, and then I moved to fourth, and taught several years in fourth, and then I'm in third.
Well, it's well-deserved, I'm sure, so. And I'm sure the children that you've, that you've touched over all those years certainly appreciate it, too.
I want them to know I care.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. What an honor.
Give her another hand, please.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to say, one of the things that's so nice about this selection this year is it shows that we're, this month, is that we're recognizing not just the teachers in the I-89 district, which one might suspect, but we're recognizing all of the school districts that make up part of Oklahoma City. So, it's lovely to see here today, and congratulations on this nice recognition.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is adjournal council proceedings, receiving the proceedings for March 5th and approving the proceedings for February 26th. We have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. Request for uncontested continuances?
Mayor, this morning, a couple on page 14 under dilapidated items 8E1, item D 534, Southwest 10th Street, we ask that be stricken to rework as property maintenance, and item H 3217, Southwest 62nd Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has repaired. Moving on to item 8F1, item H 2605, Southwest 62nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. That is now occupied. And then moving to page 16, claims for denial. The municipal councilor's office has asked to be stricken. The first is item 8M1A, the claim of Avella Brown, and the next one is item 8M1B, the claim of Kristi Isel, and we ask that be stricken, too, and those will both be brought back when additional information is received.
Okay, do we have any other requests for uncontested continuances? I'll recess the council meeting and convene as Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, number of items. We have a motion and a second.
You know, I have a question. On the resolutions, it directs the city attorney not to appeal. Have we ever appealed one of these? And to whom would we appeal? Would it be another court?
I'm sure we have appealed one at some point in the past, not in my memory, but that you would appeal, you appeal these to the Supreme Court.
Right, the Supreme Court. Thank you. But we don't do it very often, so it's not important that we don't wear the Supreme Court.
Right. Any other comments? Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, number of items. Any comments or questions?
I did just have a quick question to the manager. Jim, I don't think I've seen before a resolution allowing us to negotiate initially with one firm and secondarily with another if that didn't work out. Is that unusual? I just, I don't want to call.
No, that is not unusual. We do that from time to time, depending upon what the item is, and so it's not always commonplace, but it's, we've done it before. This is one where they went through, and there was a very distinct order, and so we wanted to cover our base. So, in case negotiations failed or we weren't able to do that, we-
That we were already lined up to.
We could go right in.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA and convene as Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, two items. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Cast your vote. It passes unanimously.
Well, I'd just like to point out that we're asking for natural gas-powered chassis, if you're correct, you know, which I think is important, and the city's ability to assume a leadership role, and I think this very important issue of trying to get as much of our transportation powered by some fresh natural gas as we possibly.
Those have actually worked out very good for us, Mr. Ryan, for a number of reasons. One, because of the volume of natural gas that's used with those vehicles, it really does have significant fuel savings. Secondly, because of, they're in the neighborhoods, and the trucks are much more quiet, and they're much more, less noxious. The natural gas is much-
I understand that the maintenance is still better on those.
We're still, we're still, it isn't more, but I don't think we've got that totally quantified yet. Full work on that.
Okay, we'll adjourn OCAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Do we have any individual consideration?
Just like to point out item AC as well as AB.
And Mayor, if I could, I'd like to just mention six double A with a comma.
David, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, well, first of all, on item AC, just wanted to recognize and thank Balletz and Oklahoma City Beautiful for their donation to the Merrill Medley Park, a bench that will go along with some of the artwork that's been donated down there. And Lisa Sinars here from Oklahoma City Beautiful, wanted to thank them and mention that. On item AB, relocating some, two firehouses on park property, I think that's a great idea. I know the area better around the Woodson Park area, and the current location of that fire station is kind of in a declining area, and to move it further east, I think, really makes a lot of sense. So, I think that's a great idea. Just wanted to point that out. And then finally, the Capitol Hill Library, we're looking at negotiating a contract for improvements to the library with an estimated cost of up to $3 million, which I think will be a great addition to that part of the city, and just wanted to bring that out. And hopefully they're working as far as obtaining the additional space that may be needed, because that's an old concrete, concrete bunker style of building. You just don't make improvements to that kind of structure very easily, so I'm sure they've got it figured out.
I'm not sure if we got it figured out.
Oh, okay.
And that project is obviously very, very near to Mr. White, too, Capitol Hill.
You know, not to get in the middle of planning, but I just have to ask the question, would it make better sense to possibly even relocate that library along, say, 25th Street to one of the existing buildings that occupy 25th Street instead of its current location on 26th Street? Just a question. It doesn't need to be answered, but-
I think I can answer it for you. That'd probably be nice, but I don't think we have the funds at hand to do that.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay, Meg?
Six AA is just a housekeeping detail, really. This, the item is the management letter for the Riverfront Redevelopment Authority, and I was carefully reading it and hoping that David Greenwell would be able to explain some of the footnotes to me. It's extremely complicated, but Ann Simank is still listed as a trustee, and it's been a long time since she served as one of those. I would say we're probably saving money on the letterhead, but perhaps we might want to revisit that.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Anything else on the consent docket? Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. At this point, I'd like to move up item 8H. I know we have a number of people in the audience. This is a resolution approving the request by Oklahoma City Beautiful to name the trails at Lake Hefner, the Burt Cooper Trail, in honor of the former Lake Herbert Trails Incorporated and Oklahoma City Beautiful Board Member Burt Cooper. And is there somebody that would like to say a few words about that? Surely somebody would, Burt was such a huge part of this city. You couldn't hardly meet him at any of the activities going on and not realize how much of a passion Burt had for anything he delved into. So, this, this is an honor well-deserved.
And when the trails were built, he was a champion for the trails, and there was not a full acceptance of the idea of trails around there, and Burt persevered, and we've got probably one of the most outstanding walking trails in the country around Lake Hefner, really, yeah, Lake.
Burt had a way of not giving up on things. Your name and address for the record, please.
And that's exactly why we would, are recommending that we name the Lake Hefner Trails the Burt Cooper Trails, because of, he, when, when people weren't, it wasn't easy, and people weren't interested in the trails, he fought, and he was one of those people who never gave up, and he made the difference. He was one of those forefathers that really has made the difference. And now I can't even imagine the Lake Hefner without the trails, and I'm glad that Mr. Cooper, he was significant in getting the monies from the government to allow us to have those trails, and he, I just really don't feel they'd be there without him. And what a wonderful way, not very often do we get an opportunity to honor someone like that in this way, and that, so I highly recommend that, that we do honor him in this way.
Well, I think it's, like I say, it's well-deserved. His wife, Terri, is in the audience, family. We certainly appreciate all that the Burt and the Cooper family's done for Oklahoma City. It's hard not to go somewhere that you don't get some involvement with that, so, well-deserved. Do I have a motion on this, please? We have a motion and a second. Cast your vote, and it passes unanimously. Congratulations. Terri, would you like to say something?
I would like, excuse me, pardon me, I would like to say thank you to all of you for this wonderful honor. I know Burt would have been, well, he would have tried to be modest, but he wouldn't have succeeded very much, but he would have, he would really been pleased. He did fight hard for the trails at a time when it wasn't necessarily a well-accepted idea, and I'm thrilled that, that you are honoring him this way. And it was almost a year ago, when I was last here, and you honored his memory with a resolution of condolence, and that meant so much to his entire family. And so, I thank you so much for all the things that you have done and said in, in honor of Burt. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, we're at item seven, concurrent docket.
Motion.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the concurrent docket? Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. On to item eight, item requiring step it votes, item 8A1 is ABC 776 at 5900 Moshteller Drive, ABC 2 overlaying the PUD 1232 in Ward 2. Ed stepped out.
You know, I was in a restaurant at that location for years, and here it's just closed right now, but it goes back to when that building was first built, and so I see no reason to deny this application. I would move through the application.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
Kim, is that all you wanted?
Yeah, that's all I wanted. Thank you for that.
Okay, well, congratulations and good luck on your enterprise up there. Look forward to seeing that.
It's a great, great location. I think it'll be a neat, new restaurant for us.
Kevin, will it rotate?
Well, we're, we've redesigned the space, and it, it rotates still, but we probably won't rotate very often.
That's great, because I, the first time I did it, I went to the restroom, couldn't find my table afterwards.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, it's a great view, whether it's rotating or not up there.
Really, really a great view. You're right about that. Thanks.
Congratulations. It passes unanimously. 8A2 is an ABC 777, ABC 3 in 228 Northeast Second in the Downtown Business District, Ward 7. Skip's gone. Do we have anybody signed up on this?
I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your vote, and it passes unanimously. 8A3 is PC 10331 at 10501 Northwest 23rd, going from double A to R1. This is in Ward 1, and I don't have a problem with this. Anybody signed up? Okay. If I could get a motion on that, please.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. 8A4 is PC 10334 at 3400 North Lincoln, going from R1 to O2 General Office District in Ward 7. Nobody signed up on this? Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. 8A5 is SPUD 697 at 2501 South I-35 Service Road, going from R1 to AE2, oh, and AE2 in Airport, to a Spud in Ward 7.
Move, move approval.
Your Honor, have they agreed to all the E's?
Yes, they have.
It looked like there were no protests past the planning commission unanimously, so I'd move approval.
Get a second. Okay. Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. Item 8B is an ordinance on final hearing, SP 452, a special permit to operate a participant recreation and entertainment. That one, that's been deferred, I'm sorry, deferred to March 26. 8C is a public hearing on an ordinance for vehicles for hire. This is for the nonprofit organizations. This is the second public hearing, and it will be on final next week, I guess. Anybody want to speak on this? Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. Item 8D is an ordinance to be introduced and set for final hearing on March 19th. This is issuance of GO bonds for $90 million. This is this year's series of the GO bonds, and I think we have a, we have a presentation on this, Jim.
Craig's just going to talk us a little bit about the timing of it, and talk to us a little bit about our ratings on this issue.
Yes, we had our, I mean, it is a $90 million sale. The actual sale will occur next week, but we did receive our ratings from Moody's and Standard and Poor's, and they both confirmed our AAA rating, which is the highest rating that you can have on municipal bonds, and so it's a very strong rating for us, and reflects very positively on the leadership that we have within the city, both with elected officials and with management. I mean, it's always as consistently with both of them, a comment of a conservative financial management is one of the factors, maintaining high levels of reserves, the strong economy, and so they're very positive on Oklahoma City, and so it's a very positive rating for us. So, it'll be $90 million in bonds. It'll be sold next week. We're expecting a true interest cost on the bids that come in under 3%, which is incredible. It's fantastic. So, you know, the water bonds came in right at about 3%, and they were very strong as well, and so we're hoping to see a really good sale next week.
Craig, that's incredibly exciting, and to be able to maintain that AAA status for the number of years we have speaks so highly of the work that the city staff does, and very grateful-
Yes.
-for it.
Will the timing of this ordinance be appropriate? We don't have final approval until March 19th. Will that stand in the way of your efforts?
It will be final. It'll be approved. The ordinance will be approved at the same time as the sale.
Okay.
So, they'll all be together.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion? Any motion on this? Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. 8E is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Do we have anybody here to speak on dilapidated structures? Need a motion? Have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. 8F is a public hearing on unsecured structures. Do we have anybody here to speak on any items under unsecured structures? Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. 8G is a right-of-way permit for Beck's Automotive to hold a Western Avenue Block Party March 24th down Western Avenue from 41st to 42nd in Ward 2. Yeah? We have a motion and a second. Okay. Cast your vote. It passes unanimously. We've already dealt with 8H. 8I is a resolution approving the preliminary report for the Phase 1 of the project sidewalk, sidewalk projects for MAPS 3.
Mr. Vice Mayor, Carl Baldeschweller is here from Smith Roberts Baldeschweller. If you- Could you go over this with us?
Name and address for the record, please.
Carl Baldishweller. I'm Smith Roberts Baldishweller. This is our preliminary report for Project 1 of the MAPS 3 Phase 1 sidewalk improvement. This is the, based on our preliminary report that we brought before you before earlier, this is the limits of the Phase 1, which is approximately, we feel, a minimum of 14 and 1/2 miles, 17 alignments based on the bids that we might receive. We took, did our estimates. We had conservative estimates and then hopefully that we'll get more of these alignments based on the bids that come in. We anticipate letting this Phase 1 in three separate projects for various reasons. One is to group the projects geographically, hopefully to get a better bid. Second is to have concurrent projects going for faster completion. And then third project would be if we have favorable bids come in, we can extend the number of alignments in Phase 1. Phase 1 is seven alignments grouped in the north side of town, approximately six miles. These are, again, geographically located up there. We hope we can get better bids by doing that, not having to contract to work all over town. The, some of the criteria that we're satisfying with these alignments, connectability, you can see those existing sidewalks on this northwestern alignment. We were making connections in the gaps of some existing alignments. On North MacArthur, you can see that we have a desauer path that's actually working as a drainage flume there along those power poles. That was one of the other criterias. And then on this one, you can see that we have some sloped embankments that will have to have a high curb on the backside. That does affect the, the price of the sidewalks, but again, most of the alignments do not have these, these types of issues. Phase 1 budget was approximately 17 alignments, 14 and 1/2 miles of sidewalk out of the $3.6 million. Phase 1, Project 1 is approximately 5.9 miles with an estimated construction cost of $1.437 million. Again, this is a, based on average unit prices that we received in past projects. Again, hopefully we'll see better unit prices, lower bids, so we can extend the number of alignments in project, in Phase 1, and it would be in the third project. Project schedule, notice to proceed was in October, preliminary report was in February. We anticipate having 95% plans by the end of this week and final plans by the end of the month. Hopefully receive bids in April and construction complete for Project 1 in October. We anticipate about a two-month gap between Projects 1, 2, and 3. And again, Project 3 would include additional alignments if our bids come in favorably. You'll be glad to answer any questions.
I've got Carl. On the initial evaluation by the subcommittee.
Yes.
They identified several miles of the areas that needed to be, excuse me, could support sidewalk construction. And we're not gonna have enough money to do all those. Do we have an estimate of how many dollars it would take to complete all of the sidewalks that you identified?
Well, in the master plan?
Yes.
Well, the master plan, we evaluated like 290 miles and then we came back with, within the budget of the MAPS 3, the 6.8 million, approximately a minimum of 27 miles based on average unit prices, it could be extended to as much as 38 miles.
Well, there's been some discussion in the council here that we would step up and provide some additional funding on the project to complete more of the sidewalks. Are we still going forward with that?
Yes, it's my anticipation that after these come in, and we know a little bit more of the prices come in, that we'll bring a resolution. We talked about using some fund balance to do some additional sidewalks and we'd bring that forth after we have a, a better price on where we're at after some of the bids.
Because the subcommittee did a lot of work and Carl guided through this, identifying sidewalks that needed, definitely were needed. And I think it would be incumbent on us to look at those, to make sure that if there was any money available, we could go ahead and fund those.
That's our intent to do so, sir.
Any other questions? Thanks, Carl. We appreciate it.
Just one question. What coordination, which of these in Phase 1 have transit routes on them?
In Project 1 or just Phase 1?
Well, Project 1, Phase 1.
Well, I can't say that offhand without my, I've looked at so many miles, I have trouble.
We can get that information, get back to you. That was clearly a criteria that was used in the evaluation.
We have, we have exhibit.
I remember it being a criteria. Now that, now that it's been selected, what, what kind of coordination is there done with COPDA or?
Well, you mean, it's going forward with construction, with the actual construction?
Is there any consideration of where we might want to put a footprint, if we wanted to put a shelter later, or where bus stops might be? Are we waiting for the Nelson-Nigard study or what?
This first phase going out, I mean, they will have, be aware of where it's going out, but we're pushing this first phase as fast as we can to get construction completed and started on this one.
But the fact is that sidewalks are gonna be easily accessible. And so the addition of a bus facility, a shelter, through it at some point in the future will be.
Possible.
Will be possible, because the access is already into it.
Okay.
It should make, it should make it fairly easy.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? We have a motion on this? We need a motion? Motion is second. Cast your vote and it passes unanimously. Eight J, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Your Honor, before we strike, can I ask a question? Did the city do anything wrong out here?
Which one?
J.
J? The city was negligent in having a pressurized water main so close to the home and had constructive notice of the problems with the water mains in the neighborhood and also failed to shut down the main within a reasonable time after the break was reported.
Those, those are negligent beyond our normal responsibilities. I mean, why are we considering that negligent? It was, was it intentional or, you know, was it actually something wrong?
We have a duty to, if we have notice of a problem or if there is actually a main break, we have a duty to get out there within a reasonable period of time and get it shut down.
I think there's a couple of factors at play on this one, Mr. Ryan. One is the fact that there had been some history of some breaks on the, on the water line. And I think it's a gray area whether we had a, and I think that's why we're settling on it, because it isn't clear whether or not we had enough notice on it that that line should be replaced. And then the other is that we had some problems getting the line isolated after the break occurred. And why, again, whether, that's, that's why it's a settlement, because.
It was a substantial settlement and that's the reason I wanted to make sure that we were on firm ground. Thank you.
Yes, and there, they would be able to get to a jury on that. So there would be a jury trial if you actually litigated it.
I need to amend my motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay. Do we have a motion then? Cast your vote and it passes unanimously. Eight K, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your vote and it passes unanimously. Eight L, we do not need executive sessions. Do we need to strike this item?
Oh, we can. I just may make a comment that if I, if I might. The parties involved have been very involved in getting applications or amicus briefs on the Supreme Court case of Tarrant County. And so we're taking a little bit of a break right now while everyone is working to prepare those, those amicus briefs. And we probably won't get into some serious negotiations until, a couple, three weeks from now, probably sometime in, in early April. So it's, it's a, not a major setback, but everybody, not the city so much, as the state and, and the, and the tribes are very much focused on, on the Tarrant County case before the Supreme Court.
Cast your vote and the item is strictly. Eight M is claims recommended for denial. We have two items left on that. Anybody here wanting to speak on the claims recommended for denial? We need to cast your vote and it passes unanimously. I think we have an extra item that I'd like to take up now, going to executive session on the pending litigation of the IFF versus the city. And we do need executive session.
We need executive session.
Cast your vote and it passes unanimously. Item nine is claims recommended for approval. Anybody here to speak on approval? Motion and a second. Cast your vote and it passes unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. Item A is a resolution approving travel expenses for Councilman Greenwell to attend the Harvard Kennedy School for Senior Executives in July.
Now, I have a question. How much does that estimate cost?
I can ask you. That includes transportation, lodging, and meals?
I'm sorry. It includes the school, the lodging and all that, but it does not include the airfare.
So roughly $12,000.
Yes.
Have we, have you sent anybody to the school before, David?
I don't believe so.
Have we got any, any testimonials about how effective it might be?
Actually, we have had some staff attend that in, in the past and we've had a very high level.
But nobody on city council has.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
We have a motion? Oh, second, okay. Cast your vote and it passes unanimously. Items from council. Ed, you wanna get a starter?
Yeah, just a big loss for Ward 2 on Sando and John Belt died. He has been called a pioneer and I think that's an accurate term. What, he, he literally was decades ahead of things that now seem kind of commonplace in our, in our vernacular, like placemaking and urban infill and all those things. He was literally decades ahead in what he did in Paseo, converting what was the Spanish Village into the Paseo in just a very slow, methodical manner, starting in 1976. He got us, that, that neighborhood, which is probably, in 2010, the American Planning Association named it the top 10 greatest neighborhoods in America. And that's the first one in Oklahoma that ever got that, that award. It was the name by Forbes magazine as America's top revitalized neighborhood and the BBC listed Paseo as one of the most beautiful neighborhoods in the United States. And that's, that's, that's really John Belt more than anyone. I'm really grateful that we have, he was at the mayor's development roundtable last in 2012. And that's on YouTube, if any, I don't know if there's any way we could put, there's a five-minute segment that's really special now that he's, because he, he shows slides of what it was like before and after and all the work that was done and how they transformed that. And it's, it's, it's split into six segments. It's on segment five out of six on YouTube. It's right after Anthony McDermott speaks for about five minutes. And it's a really special presentation by him and his wife and it just shows what, what they did in Paseo. I don't know if we could put that up on Channel 20 in some way. He was.
We'd be happy to look at that, Councilman, see what we can do on.
It's really, really nice, I mean, in retrospect now. And I'm glad that he, that he did that and that we have that memorial. He was just very calm. Unfortunately, the last time I saw him was dealing with some of these Chesapeake things on 50th and Western. And as everybody with the neighborhood could get excited, he was just always very calm and very soothing. And when he spoke, everybody calmed down and listened to him and he was just very, very distinguished. That calmness that, that comes with, with knowing how much you've accomplished and that, that, that just calmed the rest of the group down. And I really appreciated knowing him. I really, really am grateful for what he's done and the gift that he's given to the city that we can enjoy for many generations. Thanks.
Pete, David, Zach, Meg?
Just a couple of things. I also would like to express my condolences to Joy Reed Belt and the family. John was a terrific mentor of mine as we began our work on Broadway and Automobile Alley and amazingly supportive and, you know, I, there was an article, great article in the paper today that Steve Blackmire wrote and it referenced the fact that John actually sold a building to Rand Elliott years and years ago. And I, I remember reading that article and, you know, it's, it's so carefully expressed that this was the first time he'd ever sold a piece of property. And luckily, as Steve pointed out, he did sell it to Rand and we have that wonderful hydrant meat company building as well. But the Paseo is a really special place and I, I just, I guess I would like to mention, I think the services are at 3 o'clock on Thursday at All Souls Church. Oh, he was a terrific guy. I also, I would like to thank Pastor Mark Youngblood at Crossbridge Church for inviting me to attend services on Sunday. The church was celebrating its 126th anniversary down at Southwest 12th and Walker. Amazing, you know, not a large congregation, but a very blended congregation, old and young, African-American and white, everybody coming together. Willa was there to celebrate with us and sang at him. She was absolutely fantastic. And it's just one of those experiences that reminds you that you always receive more than you give when you're working with people that are there to uplift their neighborhoods. It was a terrific experience, so I hope to get a chance to go back.
Pat? Do you mind your report?
I think Chief Ryan's here to talk to us a little bit about wildfires. Hopefully he'll join us in a minute. And then we just have claims and payroll on our quarterly fund transfer reports.
The wildfires, the county commissioner Maughn has a program to remove cedar trees. And I think that would go a long way towards reducing some of the hazards we have for fires, because when they dry, they act like a bomb almost from the fire. They explode and spread flames all over, embers all over. And so I think that's an excellent program and we are looking at what he's doing and perhaps replicate it on some of our city-owned facilities.
And as you know, we are using that program on the south side of Lake Heffner to work on, on some of those areas. He's been very gracious to work with us on our issues on our property.
The other thing I was so surprised about those red cedars is they take up to 40 gallons of water a day. I mean, that's just unbelievable when we're experiencing a drought, so.
And they convert that water to, to an oil in a tree that just explodes on you. So it's, it's hard to stay ahead of them, so. Chief Ryan, welcome.
Morning.
Got some words of wisdom for wildland fires?
Well, hopefully so, chief. We, Councilman Kelly, I think, recommended that we do a, a report on wildland fire prevention because of the upcoming wildland, I mean, really, we're not, we haven't been immune to it at really any time. There's usually during different parts of the year when, when that spikes up a little bit. But with the drought conditions that you heard about here recently and the, and the recent report that you had, you know, that's been a constant issue for us to address. And so we put this report together and basically what we've been trying to do in the last year and a half or so is just increase awareness, not only to prevent fires for all people being very careful with their outdoor burning and the use of equipment and things of that nature that we see as the cause of some of these fires from time to time, but also comprehensively with all the resources that are out there right now for wildland fire prevention, pool those together into a program that we've put together and presented in four different wards of the city and kind of the outlying areas over the past several months. And we, we continue to, want to encourage people to take advantage of that program if they will. But again, what we tried to do again is just increase awareness. That's a lot of it that we see. People just, sometimes I don't think, pay attention to the conditions out there when we have really hot weather, low humidity and, and dry conditions. And, you know, they wanna do things outside with cooking and other types of burning, cleaning off their property and things of that nature. And that's where a lot of times that we run into trouble with these wildland fires. And of course, as we've seen in the past, when those conditions arrive, they, they can affect a large area of the city and threaten homes and people's properties. So we've done a series of things over the past several months to, again, increase awareness, try and educate our citizens a little bit better about what they can do to prevent these and that's contained in this report. And I'll just hit a few other points, but a lot of things we've tried to do, again, have been public information type things. We've done PSAs over some of the radio stations here locally. Again, just. We've done PSAs over some of the radio stations here locally, again, just trying to increase people's awareness to be very careful about what they do around their property. We're starting to issue gate tags when our firefighters that work out in those areas are out and about doing their work, and they identify something that's a potential hazard, like high grass and weeds along the fence line, those types of things. Put a little gate tag on the person's property to remind them that that's something that they might want to address and help us out with and clean up. As I said earlier, we conducted a series of town hall-type meetings, kind of in the four corners of the city. You know, those were, you know, attended well in some places, maybe not so well in others. I think, depending on how recently that area of town experienced a large fire, kind of drove that whole issue as far as how many people. But we were there, and we continue to have that program available. If any neighborhood associations, homeowners groups, so forth, want that information, we'd be glad to come out and provide that in that format. We've tried to, as part of our program, pool all the resources that are currently out there, so using some of the things that, and the programs that are available through the State Department of Forestry, the National Weather Service, American Red Cross, and other resources, to pool those together and make sure that our citizens are aware of those programs that are available to them to assist them in this way. And then, again, just tried to drive home the message, and it's very simple. When we've had these fires in the past, you know, our firefighters work very hard, they're very taxing, our resources are really drained during those times, which has an impact to the city as a whole, that our resources are tied up, and so therefore, the city itself is a little bit less protected because we're stretched so thin at those times. But what we, and as hard a work as our firefighters doing, a greater job as they do at protecting property during those times, we've also seen that the people that maintain their property have a lot higher probability of their property not being affected during those times. So very just simple things that everybody can do as far as maintaining their property, keeping their grass cut low, keeping their trees trimmed up, bushes, cedar trees, as you mentioned, away from their property, their home and so forth, and keep their lawns watered and things of that nature where they stack their firewood. We've seen that that has a huge impact when we do have these fires, that people that have done the work and maintain their property have a lot higher probability of their property not being damaged. So we would just encourage everybody, again, to be aware, to be very careful about what they do with their outdoor burning, make sure that if they're trying to burn off debris and so forth, that they obtain the permit, because when they do that in the right way and do it on the days that we designate as burn days, we usually don't have any problems from that. Be aware of, you know, they see something that potentially could start, you know, one of their neighbors doing something, they need to notify us as far as illegal burning, things of that nature. And sadly to say, some of these fires are started intentionally just for the, you know, malicious purpose that some people might have of starting a fire just to see, you know, what kind of excitement they can generate. So make sure they're vigilant, and if they see something suspicious, they need to report that to us, and we'll certainly take a look at it. But if anybody would like a specific program, or we come out to your neighborhood or your community area or whatever, they need to contact our public education office at 297-3318. We'd be glad to come out and speak to them. Glad to come out to any specific homeowner's place and take a look at their property and give them some advice on what they might do to help better protect their property. So, again, we want people to be vigilant, and we want people to be careful and be aware of what they're doing, and careful, so we can avoid these things if at all possible.
One comment, doesn't have, it's not, doesn't have much to do with what the Oklahoma City can do on private property, but if weather conditions are right, there's going to be a controlled burn on the south side of Draper this week.
Yes, sir.
So that's not something you can do. We've talked a little bit about doing it outside of city-owned property, but there's all kinds of liability questions. But this is going to be a much larger one than one we tried first, and hopefully, it's going to be a little hotter than the one we tried first. But if this works, I mean, this is part of an ongoing program, at least on the Draper Elm Creek reservation, to try to prevent them from at least starting or continuing through that area. That's a big chunk of southeastern Oklahoma City. We hope to do that tomorrow, the next day.
And, yeah, as we go through that program every year, and it continues to expand, I think that's something that we'd be interested in, maybe looking at other areas, and like I say, you know, clearing out a lot of that lower, very dry ground fields that really kind of carry those fires and, you know, contribute to the rapid spread of them.
I will remind everybody that you can burn inside the city limits of Oklahoma City, but with a permit.
Correct.
And we do that so that we can
We issue those permits, and again, there are days, depending on the weather conditions, wind and so forth, that we designate as burn days. So it's not just once you obtain a permit, you're free to go. You need to check with us and make sure that it's a designated burn day.
Any other question for the chief? Thanks, Chief Ryan.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other city manager report?
No, sir.
We're on to item, citizens to be heard. Joe Sarge Nelson. Name and address for the record, please, Joe.
My name is Joe Nelson, and I've been here before, and under different circumstances. I'm here today for a different reason now that I got my medical back, and I'm in good I'd like to enlighten the city council on one thing. For four years, I spent a quarter of a million dollars investigating City Hall. I'm not going to lie about it. I got sick and kind of got taken down and got off to a bad start last year with the documents I presented to you. They weren't games then, they're not games now. I left a document back there for the mayor, Mr. Couch, and Mr. Jordan. Within 10 days, I'd like to meet him with all three of you. No joke, no plays, no nothing. I don't want to talk to anybody, I want to talk to you three people. I've always spent a little over $175,000 in commercials. Last November the 18th, when I officially was talking privately in the background about running for mayor, because I didn't like the way this job was being done, they tried to burn me out, burnt my office down. The man was caught, sent three years in penitentiary. The only thing that made me stick it out in my mind real good is the man is, I do believe, his last name was the same gentleman that just recently passed away, that is in the, some kind of business where printing and so forth and commercial is, that the mayor works for, or did. And that brought up to my attention. Fortunately, my documents were not destroyed. The police recovered them nicely. They got photographs, emails, all kinds of things. But my thing is, what I'm trying to say is, August the 19th, it came a little more direct when one of the Ogle boys asked one of the former mayors, why is everybody down here buying up personal property down in the city? We're down here, what about the rest of Oklahoma City? There's nothing being done. We don't have police officers. We got between 1,000 and 2,000 police officers to cover 606,000, 606 square miles. That ain't even enough to cover 500 people. If a police officer was called for right here, right now, he'd be out doing his job somewhere else you're, I'd be in trouble. We got some fine officers out there. They protect you, protect them, give them some security, give them some more backup. Put about 250 police officers, we can afford them. Quit spending so much money down here, and let the police officers cover and protect what you're playing for. I know last time I spoke here, I think I made a comical remark to him about stepping down, but I can tell you right now, I respect all of you all privately outside this building. I really do, or you wouldn't be here. You need to work together a little tighter, a little tighter. I show you how good my memory is for a 75-year-old man. I made, the comment was made by him, when I think one of you gentlemen up there spoke that, did I understand him correctly, that he's going to run for mayor? And then I was told I couldn't speak for a while, and Pete White said, well, that's for him. You remember that statement? Don't kid yourself, my memory is like a rock, and I've been on both sides of the fence, but I'm not going to play jokes anymore. I'm deadly serious. From here on out, I'm going to play by the book, but I'm going to get some things done, and you all are going to work with me, because I'll be at the biggest pain you have ever seen. And like I said, I've been on both sides of the fence. I've been a foreinvestigator, both federal and state. I've been in a lot of places, and I'm retired from the military, and there ain't no too many people scare me that much. I'm walking on one leg, and I can stand on two, but I would appreciate the courtesy. If I treat you like the courtesy and respect, give it back to me. That's all I ask. But I would like to talk to you formally, I'd like to talk to the mayor, and I'd like Mr. Jordan to be present, because what I've got to show you, you're going to want to see. And that is no joke. And I'll be here, if I can hear from you all within 10 days, I'd greatly appreciate it. Mr. Pete, nice to see you again. Mr. Shannon, Mr. Jordan, Mr. Couch, and Mrs. Cursey, I don't know what she thinks about me right now, she probably liked me out the window, but that's okay. Mr. Ryan, I hate to hear that, but Skip, Mr. Greenwell, we've got a good body here, good working people. All we've got to do is pull together a little tighter. And you all know we're spending a lot of money we don't need to spend. And I want to tell you the last thing I'm going to say, and it's not a joke, it started out that way, but I don't know who designed 40 out here, and I'm sure there was a lot of money went into this. I've been waiting for the first ice storm that never came. Going up and down these service roads from Penn and May and all this, I'm waiting for these guys to get up there and start going down here. How are they going to stop? They're going to slide right out into Reno, you're going to have more suits than you have ever dreamed. I tested this theory about three weeks ago. I have a dent in my right front fender because I couldn't stop, but it was a joke, and I played it, and I had to pay for it. But the first time we get any ice out here, you're going to have to have ice trucks all over the place. And I'm sure you all thought this, you just never said anything about it, but that's the way it is. And you all do work hard, and I comment to you, you really do, and I'm looking right at you, I know you work hard, but I wish you'd really take me serious. Don't let my side fool you. I really want to talk to you people, because I'm a contract engineer, I have been one for 55 years. I've got some businesses in town, two of the largest in the world, right here in the city. And I just would like to have the courtesy for you people, don't judge me by what I look and how I dress, I still work, and I'm going to work when I leave here. But I do appreciate y'all for what you do, I really do. But help me. The city needs it, you need it, let's go for it, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Any other citizens be heard? Okay, we have executive session.